Okay. All favor for done. Good. So folks. We are now going into the public hearing. As noted. So, welcome to the public, to this public hearing. I am Evelyn Greenstein, President of the Board of Trustees, Tri Public Library, and would like to introduce the rest of the board. We have Marie Gavazzi. We have. Sorry, oh boy. Keith Slusky, we have Kirsten Murcher, we have Jerry Descent, and we have Carolyn Fagan and Brianna Clark. And I didn't miss any of this. This resolution of the board authorizing the public hearing and the affidavit of publication of the official notice has been entered into the record. Paul, since you're there, could you click the got it part? Because I don't know if it'll do it without it. Thank you. This hearing is open for public comment on Resolution Number One of this board permitting the Tri Public Library Board of Trustees to authorize its members to attend meetings by video conferencing under extraordinary circumstances. Members are still required to be physically present at such meetings unless such member is unable to be physically present at any such meeting location due to extraordinary circumstances, including disability, illness, caregiving responsibilities, or any other significant or unexpected factor or event which precludes the member's physical attendance at such meeting. A member attending remotely still must be heard, seen, and identified while the meeting is being conducted, including but not limited to any motions, proposals, resolutions, and any other matter formally discussed or voted upon, but not including an executive session. When a member is attending by video conferencing, a recording of the meeting is made and posted to the website within five days. We shall now take testimony on this resolution. Comments will be noted and discussed during the regular board meeting following this public hearing.
Yes. I saw that a word that appeared to then put in as except was in as excerpt. I don't know whether some. Fix it. Okay. Oh, fight. Sorry.
Like a legal means. Which is pretty. Which is pretty funny since I basically took. Committee on Open Governments. Is there anyone attending virtually who has any testimony to offer on this? Unless we have any objection, we will wait a few minutes though, and then. As part of the brackets. To jeopardy. There is no mandated time as long as we continue until all testimony is heard. There is no testimony considering that the CNG called there is a 30 minutes, we can call a lot quicker, and I did check with them about. And they didn't say, no, you can't do that.
Next.
I'll go look at it later and see if it's.
I don't think within the context, right? Since excerpt during executive session.
Yeah. Probably get Google. I'm sorry, what?
Does their vote count?
Let's vote, I'm sorry.
If someone is attending your vote late.
For remembering. Their vote will count if there's that two-way communication. They had made the announcement with certain guidelines. But yes, their vote will count. That's all part of the purpose of the ballers.
So doesn't it have to be an in-person forum?
With the, again, we're going through all the different guidelines. I'm not, I didn't want to go through every single.
As long as there were sufficient.
In whatever location that is publicly available.
Do we have to be approved? You know, because it says under extenuating circumstances. Because it sort of says what's extenuating.
Is not extended, I think that.
It can all be a dog.
Yes, I think so. I really do think so. But the person then informs the President of the Board that they're not going to date, and then the President of the Board gets announced and makes the announcement. And again, that's something that's the next step, but that's for later. It's on the agenda here. But that's another topic. So.
If we are good.
It's been five. Unless there is an objection from any member of this board about concluding this public hearing, then we do not need to take a vote. But I am now closing this public hearing on this resolution. Thank you, everybody. And now we can go to our regular board meeting. Yes, although the budget's not in there anymore.
Because I found them.
Oh, you did find it, okay.
Yes, I didn't realize.
Right. Okay, so we have a genuine in front of us because of certain extenuating circumstances. If we are going to just re-manage our agenda today. And so the first thing we are going to talk about is we will, one of our members needs to leave at 6:15 and would like to vote on the budget issue. We are going to be discussing the budget first and foremost, and then get to everything else on the agenda afterwards. And hopefully, we can stay fairly focused in discussions and questions so we can accommodate this request. You're welcome. So we all have a copy of the budget. Shall we start with any questions, comments, et cetera? Yes, please, be soon.
So. Automation went down. I would think automation would go up. It's not, again, not a.
No, we're over anyway this year, so. That's just an adjustment.
I'm not sure what that means. So we've already gone over the.
Yeah. We're. We're ahead of the game, you know, this year. What does it say? Right now, you're ahead by 731.
So you're basing that on?
So yeah, basing it again on current. Experience.
Please, anybody else who has questions section, chime in. Otherwise, I'll keep speaking. So insurance. Went down, which again surprises me, my insurance always goes up.
I have no indication of the world.
That's all I have. First question from budget.
I think in some of the lines I was looking towards, you know, some overages that we've had in the past year. I'm trying to make adjustments to make those even more accurate. I think there is an issue, though, with heat and electricity. Yeah, I need to, I'd like to take a look at that account too and see why that's that much more. I'm sorry?
It shows going up substantially.
Yeah, what's going up? I'm sorry. What?
Workers' compensation.
Oh, workers' comp, yeah, yeah. Yes, it has gone up substantially. We spoke with them, they say they were underbilling us, and now they sent us. I mean, data side, I guess, you know. Don't have too much to say there.
That's not based on salary. Is that based on salary? At all? Salary.
Based on number of people, number of employees. Also, based, I mean, every business is a category. So libraries and schools maybe would be a category that they calculate based on that. But it's based on the number of employees you have.
Yes.
Well, we have. We just started doing bank charges, so our bank charges, the bank charges and the fees that we have this year.
Yeah.
Are they in the budget somewhere? It looks like it's about $2,000.
Missileing, basically. You know, that's how I count that.
Why is security gone down? Why is security gone down?
We haven't used contract security since the pandemic. So we're not sure of what direction we want to go with that. I was not satisfied with the kind of people that we had as security. Actually caused more problems than I think we would have had anyway.
Are we not going to have security people?
Well, we talked about, you know, actually hiring somebody. That didn't work out last time we tried either. It's a civil service position. Only one person took the test and was not what we wanted. Sir, I don't know. I think it's very, very difficult to find the right person, especially for what we pay.
Especially if you have a higher off list. Especially if you have to hire off the civil service list.
Yeah. As I say, that didn't work. I mean, they gave the test and one person took it and was just not somebody we wanted.
Have you identified people that you think would be, could be good at that position or not?
Yeah, I've been looking for the guy.
And he found some people.
It was, yeah, I talked to him a couple of years ago. He used to work for the Tri Police Department. He was a community relations guy. But he's probably left town. I can't find him. He was perfect.
No, he's still here. I saw him.
He doesn't answer any of his telephones. So if you run into him on the street. That's another thing, I haven't run into him on the street. What's that? No, it's, what's his name? But it's, it's. I mean, with the couple of years of experience we've had, we haven't had the right person. I mean. Yes, and we've had people literally who made the problem worse. So I don't know, it's still an open question.
If you only have one person, then would that be adequate for all of the hours you grow up in anyway?
No, no, I mean, we're open 96 hours in two locations. No, you're not going to have. No way to hire somebody for that. Or even two people for that.
One advantage of hiring a service is that you could find people who fit the different hours and it substitute, you know, sub in if someone can make it. That was the only advantage.
I have another question. There is consideration of a director's increase in salary. Is that in here in the budget?
Yes. In the salary. The salary, although it's not an exact number. It will come up. That's why you're 46,000 or something under, or whatever we are at the moment.
Want to be in, but you are.
And I think that we were low over the past year, too.
That's why I'm concerned about the gas and electric, because that's the only number that's pretty close to, supposed to be more exact. And I'm not sure what happened, because we were under last year. And all of a sudden, I don't know, I missed whatever the price increases were. Quite frankly, at this point, I would add $10,000 to that. Which would add $10,000 to the total, because you're not going to find that much.
As far as how we ended last year. Yes, we were very close last year. In fact, I think I complimented you, Paul.
On what?
On the gas and electric that you. So.
That's what I said.
Thirty thousand, and then we, the, what we had was 31,400. So considering.
Yeah.
I thought that was really close.
And what I was looking at too before, I probably missed some of the, some of the big bills that had come in since the June meeting. But, and again, I will, I want to take a look at that account, see exactly what happened, but I think for our purposes, I think we should have had 10,000 to that.
And as I say, my projections are around 50,000.
Oh, blame. But again, you know, the bills are kind of staggered, you know. By the time you get into the fall and maybe start using gas again, the bills are kind of staggered, so you don't see them until the next year. So I don't know, I think the 10,000 would probably be, but. That's another thing, I mean, we replaced every light in both buildings, you know, to LED. So anyway, I need to look at the breakdown, what actually. What's that? I don't, I don't, I don't feel that. I don't know, I'm more confident. You know, with the flux in that and the flux in the people.
But you said you have, I have a figure from the, from the health insurance.
Yeah, they do, but like I said, it's not, I mean, that's based on who is part of the health insurance plan now. You know, six months from now, that could be totally different. Which is what happens. You know, especially based on our size of our turnover. I, I don't know, I wouldn't really.
Any other thoughts on your part?
What's that?
Any other thoughts or comments on your part?
Your comments?
Yeah, on your part.
I don't know, I think I said everything.
You look like you're about to say something.
No, no, no. Been doing this for a couple of months now, and I think I've said most. I think philosophically, I think it's important that we are able to, you know, work on this particular problem of being kind of behind the eight ball with salaries. And also in consideration that there's only very few district libraries that weren't part of the nearest state or government system in this state. You know, I think it will help us in the job market. It will help us to be a little more competitive. And I think it's very important that we let people know out there what the problem is and ask them, you know, for their support.
What will we do if it's not accepted?
The budget goes back to the current level, which means you don't do much of anything.
We also have to cut. We have to cut, thank you, yet for rejecting that there'll be increases in costs going into 2023. Wouldn't we have to cut back even? So we wouldn't be able to do.
Well, the only thing you could cut back is cut staff. You can't cut utilities. So there's really, I mean, if you cut staff, you cut hours. I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't see that. I think we could survive without that. And I don't think that's, right now, I don't think that we should use that, you know, as a threat. You know, in the upcoming election.
With the public, you're saying?
Right. You know, I think we should go with a very, very positive outlook. And I really, you know, if that doesn't pass. You know, we may be able to limp along without cutting hours. I think it's going to be not pleasant. And we're going to face, you know, perhaps worse turnover than we're facing right now.
And staff is aware that this does not pass.
They are indeed. We had a meeting and discussed it with all staff members, and they know, I think, the consequences of.
There's no retirement, there may not be any, you know, the raises won't happen either.
That's true as well.
So. Just as a aside, in that I've been working on the 125th anniversary. And as we went through all these articles about the libraries for the last 100 years, it's amazing how the problems are exactly the same, being underfunded, being hot in the building, having no parking. But what really struck me, and I forgot about it, was up until we became the district library, we only got $146,000 from the city. I mean, we have been underfunded for someone, there's no way we could have caught up. And we're catching up for years and years and years and years. And even this is, it's just a move. Yeah, it's not even nearly much. But I understand that, you know.
Well, I think given our history, and I think that was one of the things that affected the decision, you know, when we became a district, is, oh my gosh, don't ask for too much. And we didn't ask for enough, not enough to operate properly for a library of 50,000, with a 50,000 people population. As I said many times, you know, you're, you're looking at libraries in this class are working with $3 million budget, basically. And if you look at our standing in per capita support, it's not very good in this district.
Very modest.
When you think in terms of, you're a little over $30 per person on that 50,000. And then you think what it costs to even subscribe to just one newspaper or one website. My people I've talked to thus far have been understanding and supporting, so.
Even the Times Union wanted for digital $30 a month. Even the Times Union wanted for digital thirty dollars a month.
Okay. Um, are there any other questions or comments right now?
I have a question. If this budget is passed. Are we going to be transparent and tell people that. It's a commitment to also spend an additional thirty seven thousand in next year's budget for the next twenty-five years? What? Well, that, so because the ninety-three thousand is a buy-in, so it's.
No, the ninety-two thousand, as far as I know, is the ongoing cost base.
Okay.
So it, and because what Paul said to me is it doesn't include the thirty-seven thousand back payment. Because that won't. Be needed to be paid until the following year.
Okay. So in twenty twenty-four, we would be paying for the New York State retirement, ninety-five plus thirty-seven.
Yeah, that's the buy-in. And then, yeah. But again, it could go down, we don't know yet.
All right, we don't know the exact. We don't even.
I think, yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to be transparent anyway about this budget. Um, and I think, um, you know, if it is passed tomorrow, I need to start working on, you know.
Marketing.
Yeah, the, the marketing. Um, and it's more, it is a little more difficult, it's, you know, to market this particular issue. Um, it's easier to market something like, we're gonna buy more books, so we're gonna, you know, open another branch or something like that. We're talking about, you know, staffing costs here. Um, so yeah, I mean, I intend to be as honest and transparent as I can with this thing.
So who will be responsible for coming? Is, is the marketing all on call, or is it something that we as a board is?
Our board, the outreach committee, that's where we're also for a regular meeting. I mean, the rest, later.
I don't have much time.
I know, so.
I, I think what I'll be doing, since I'm not a marketer. I'll be calling all of you up and say, hey, look at this and see what do you think, and, you know, what do you got?
Yeah, this is what I want to call it.
I haven't.
In, so.
I haven't sat down there and tried to, you know. To do this. But yeah, even our staff right now, they need talking points. I mean, as soon as this thing is approved, they need.
So now, speaking about approval, looking at the time.
How do we get that ten thousand in for the utilities?
Are we gonna put that in?
Um, I, yes, I'm recommending that go in. Changing, yeah, that's gonna change. Um, you know. With, yeah, it's gonna change that number, it's gonna also change the tax levy, because that's where it comes from. So the thirty-three thousand dollar line item was a forty-three thousand, forty-three. And the, uh, you said the tax levy would change.
Yeah.
Sixty, so that total number down. And the revenues would change to one five seven seven, seventy-two. The, the, yeah, the total expenditures would be one million five seven seven, seventy-two.
And that would match the total income as well.
Yeah, well, the income, the tax levy would be one million four sixty-eight, two eighty-two.
Yeah, this line right here, the total of these here would be, these two numbers are the same number.
Yeah. Oh, I see what you mean, yeah. Yes, they, they have to balance. Because we. Unfortunately, we can't do deficit spending and.
Pretty money.
Pretty money, stuff like that.
So if I may, if, if with these changes, are we ready to take a vote? Well, I, I'll make the motion that with these changes, these are this addition to the budget. That the board approves the twenty twenty-three budget. In favor? What, second, sorry, what?
We should have discussion.
I thought we just kind of did.
Yeah, but you.
Okay.
You gotta.
Well, I just. I just wanted to explain how I'm voting.
Okay.
And I'll be voting against it because I. Feel that's one of our biggest responsibilities is the finance, financial wellbeing of the library. And I worry about this commitment that is entailed in here in terms of the. Becoming involved, uh, part of the New York State retirement system. I know, going forth, if we approve it, the only way we can get out of it is to dissolve our organization. And although Paul says that. We should have a budget three times as large, we don't. And so. I worry about us trying to spend like a, uh, three times greater budget. Now, can everybody vote on this? Or does someone have to recuse themselves?
Who would need to recuse themselves?
Carolyn, are you affected by this? Sorry, you not, you won't become eligible to be a part of the New York State retirement system. But you worked here in the past.
Ex-employees, it's not for ex-employees.
No, I wouldn't happy if that was the case, but I don't believe it is.
Yep.
Well, but if you went back to work or.
By any, it's one to come here to work, right?
No, it's not, but.
She'd buy back time.
I think that's, yeah, that she has a conflict.
I disagree.
I disagree.
Normally disagree on it.
Why is that?
Because of the way the structure works. Former employee already gone. You know, if you're saying, oh, somebody can come, any one of us can come to, could leave the board and come to work. Certainly, I could leave the board and come to work.
No, but you don't have that status already.
If you come in as a former employee, you would have to buy back your time, it's not like it just.
Yeah, right, it's.
I could do the same.
Yeah. Yep, well, I could, the employees who are already here have to buy back their time.
If they choose to.
Right, so I, I just see it as a conflict of interest.
So as a part, as a state employee, is that also not a conflict of interest? Does he get awesome?
Well, I don't think he has any current association.
But either just Carolyn right now, so Carolyn is.
But one of the things that was discussed, one of the questions I asked was whether somebody who isn't currently employed. And isn't with the state could apply for it. And I was told yes, that it wouldn't affect the, the amount of money we should be paying because they just. They just accept that as a possibility and it's kind of a. I think it's the safer thing to do. I don't know that it's going to change the vote, but I do think that.
Okay, has this.
Conflict of interest. I know we haven't signed the conflict of interest form for this year.
Well, we, we did the audit, and as far as I understand, what we had initially, the auditor was sufficient. Um, but how about this? Can we take a quick vote on whether or not we feel that there's a conflict of interest?
I mean, I, I have no, if you, if, if we use that straw, then I don't have.
I think it's, I think it's the safer thing to be.
I know, to avoid, you're supposed to avoid any appearance.
I don't see any.
It's not an appearance.
You have an opinion, doesn't mean the rest of us share it.
Yeah.
And what if we find out after the fact? No, find out after the fact.
And there was a conflict. Yeah, then I say, let us, let us. Um, check in. If we have to take a revote, we'll take a revote. But now, if we can, I would very much like to get this moving. Um, so not only, you know, again, we have to put all these pieces in. We're delaying and delaying, and I think it's really important, it's we.
I don't think we're delaying and delaying. This is, again, you don't want any appearance of conflict of interest. And this is something that the public sees as a conflict of interest, even though he may not.
I, I think, then you can say anything Carolyn does is a conflict of interest.
But. I mean, any, even a secretary.
You could see as a.
Yeah.
Without the nearest secretary.
Okay.
So why, how do you benefit from that?
Well, how would I benefit from it?
I say it would be, it might pay back to work.
Right, a potential benefit. So if, all right.
All right, well, I'm going to, let's say, we're not gonna argue anymore. We're going to take a vote, please. I'm, I'm going to make the motion. Uh, if those who believe that Carolyn Fagan should recuse herself, um. Do we have a second on it? On the motion? We're gonna do a second? Okay, all in favor of saying that Carolyn needs to recuse herself? Or let's say nay? Okay.
Abstain.
Abstain, would abstain. I think the eyes have it, so, or the days rather, have it. Carolyn is not needing to recuse herself. If we find that there is a balance of a, a change in how this might have worked out. Or if I can find out if there's any indication that there's a conflict of interest, we can deal with it next month, from between now and August. Um, so.
May I offer a friendly suggestion?
It depends. We don't have much time, we have Brianna leaving in a couple of minutes.
I don't, I, I understand the need to avoid flesh out the conversation.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, Brianna.
Vote on the budget, but.
I, I, I think it could be a short suggestion, and please feel free to disregard it. Would you be, would the board be open to doing a straw poll? See what the results of the straw poll are? And if the results are decisive, then perhaps you might consider recusing yourself. And then we don't have to revisit this next month.
Okay, so, I think that's an excellent, so just. All right, done. So why don't we just take a vote? Please do this. I'm going to repeat, I'm making the motion that we approve with the changes made. Um, the ten thousand dollar change made to the budget, we approve the twenty twenty-three budget. All in favor? Oh, sorry. Oh, did we get a sec? Did we have one before? I was, okay, um, sorry, I'm just getting a little nervous. Um. Any nays? Any abstentions, although by the count, we don't. Um, so, there's nothing left, but I had to say it at this point. So, uh, the twenty twenty-three budget has passed because we had enough votes. I'm approving it anyways. Uh, I think the conflict of interest issue is moot point. Um, but I will look into that because I think it's an interesting point of order. Okay, thank you so much. Okay. All right, so. I need one second to do this. Now, we're going back to what is our sort of very odd agenda today. I don't know if I said this before, but. Well, we have an agenda in front of us, there are some additions and movement to this, so. Hopefully, we can all be able to do this together. So first, is there any public comment?
I'd like to say something. I would just, yeah, I would just like to say thank you to the board. I appreciate, I appreciate all your work and I appreciate you're having confidence. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, um, Carolyn, treasures report and approval of expenditures, please.
I make a motion that is in accordance with the requisition of my ass. The board approves the monthly expenses in the amount of forty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. Second. Those in favor?
Okay, any other questions or? For the treasurer? Uh, next is our consent agenda, which this month consists of the approval of the minutes of the meeting held June fourteenth. Building committee report, which I know you submitted, and administrative committee, I should say reports, because there's two of them in there, correct?
Two seconds, a minute.
We've called it reports from, from your days, so we just kept it. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? A, L, and.
A second.
Oh, well, your motion, he can be second. We're, we're nice here. All right, all in favor? I think everyone's okay. All right, so now we go to this part of our agenda. Number one is done. Uh, number two, so now that we have had our public meeting on the resolution to allow video conferencing. We actually have to go through the process of approving said resolution. I know you've had some comments, and I'm looking at so hard to find this word, and I can't. Got a speech?
There's a seven, six, four, five, six down. The sixth one down.
Okay, could you mind?
All right, so just go for the new conference, must accept, Jeffrey.
One, two, three, four, five, six, excerpt, I kept looking at. I had to go check to see. Pretty much, I thought this, you do paste it. So with the change of the word, except for ex. Uh, are there any, if you know my, let's do the discussion part first. Any discussions on the resolution, any other questions or comments? Okay, then I'm going to make the motion to approve resolution number one. Of twenty twenty-two on the use of video conferencing. Do I have a second? Carolyn, I'm using this stuff. I saw your hand go up, right? Yeah, well, I saw two, so it's okay, I'm using her. Uh. All in favor? All. Okay. On our one hundred and twenty-fifth year celebration, yippee. And this is what it looks like.
Yeah, yours are in color. This is in your package too. That's our promotional. Culture.
Uh-oh.
Bill Simcoe's name is.
What's that?
Yeah, I just saw this.
Oh, Sinio?
It's William Simcoe, as I am C O.
Okay.
William Simcoe, so good.
Okay. I didn't even see this.
So, Virginia, who has been working very hard to organize this whole celebration, is pretty confident that we're in good shape. We have booked our entertainment. We have building tours going on. Friends will be supplying refreshments.
Thank you, friends.
There's lots of activities that have been organized and planned.
Thank you for the magic bus.
The staff has been enthusiastic. The board has volunteered to do their part here, and I think we're in good shape.
You know, there's a lot of information on here, which ordinarily I was object to and had, but the way the colors are different, they still all stand out, so I think it's really well done. Very good. Virginia did that, yes, yes, really well done.
It just, the first time I saw it, oh my God, there's so much.
Yeah, it's so much, the different colors.
Oh, I know.
Brought you to the different activities, which is great.
Kathy Sheen, by the way, has been asked to speak at the reception.
I don't know if we have the answer yet.
I know, but she's been asked. I noticed you said asked, and does it happen here?
Explained for them.
I love the idea. Self, we get to do selfies with Bruno. I don't get into a selfie, but I'm glad. You know the skeleton? Bruno is our mascot, our skeleton. So, and there's going to be a coloring book. Anything else?
No, I think, I think that covers it.
I regret that will be not the country. My apologies.
Well, can you just leave your ear? We borrow it. Where will you be?
Canada.
What, not too far.
Vancouver and Winnipeg.
Very nice.
So. So, let's see, some, some big good news, or at least some, an update. Is easier than, to be honest, putting it in upper Hudson or, or the three four. So, you've all heard about the 90-10 option for our construction grant. You know, every so often, I throw it out there. Up to now, even though it's legislated several years ago, we've been, we, in a button, has been unable to implement it for a few reasons. One, governor signed it too late in its first year. Two, it's only triggered if the request for funding was no more than 10% of the system's available funds for the construction grant. And while Upper Hudson's board did define the criteria and identified the eligible libraries in the system, DLD did not create a workable mechanism, I love that phrase, to determine eligibility, so it could not approve the 90% award. However, as of this week, the legislation has now been revised, and the system can award up to 50% of the system's total allocation. Also, DLD has created a system to determine eligibility. So, this is the good part. Troy Public Library is one of the seven, which also includes Albany Public Library, Water Valley Public Library, Rensselaer Public Library, Cohoes Public Library, Minence Public Library, and the Diver Library in Scatico, have all been deemed eligible for the 90-10 option. As of this cycle. It gets exciting, however, now it's got to be the downer. There's some, you know, border. There's no, there is absolutely no guarantee that this option will actually come into play. Because all decisions for public library construction grants are made by the UHLS Board, the systems board, and that, our, that board is going to do its own review of its, all its members' library requests. I did follow up with Tim on some more details. The ratio of, that we are now at 2575. We can go up to, to make sure I do this right, 10 to 90. So it could be anywhere from the 2575 to the 90-10. Also, depending on request, we could be, we could be granted even less than the 75%, which has happened. Like, this year, we are under. And we're still hoping that somebody gets turned back, but so far, nothing's, you know, happened. If it does, then we are one of the first in line to be fully funded. But, so, again, no guarantees is happening. We have some flexibility in these ratios. We can go between, we are eligible for now, to the 90-10, or even less. The saga continues. So, the request need to go in in August, unless anything changes, and I'll play that more tomorrow, I'm hoping. Unless anything changes in August, Upper Hudson will go back to each member library to negotiate its request. And then by September, Upper Hudson takes the vote and then sends it on to the state. So, I just thought it would be really fun to share this information with you soon as possible that things are like.
Is that in the, on the website? I mean, is it in the Dropbox?
Is this in the Dropbox yet? No, this is just something I wrote up, so I could share it with everybody.
Yes, it would be good to, to have that in writing.
I could always put it in, in, or I could certainly do it as part of the addendum to next month's Upper Hudson report, too. We're trying to go through this all when so much of it is talk. I thought it was not quite dropped yet, but we're good. Okay, I need ten. Kind sir, would you like to give the director's report?
Yeah, I've been far away, so I don't know.
Okay, sir, never mind.
I didn't do a good one, but I'll do a good one. We started construction, the, on the ceiling floor project. We started with the kitchen floor downstairs. So they'd ripped up the wooden floor and getting ready to pour some concrete. Basically, we signed a contract with Franco Construction. And their bid was the lowest at 92,820. Actually.
9320.
You, you, you wait all these numbers down like they were.
They're very important.
I have to. I, I have to.
Thank you.
That's not going to be a final number.
Okay, well, that's fair enough.
The grant was for, the grant was for 95. And the, DLD doesn't like it when you don't spend the whole thing. So, we'll have to talk to Franco and see what else they can do down there.
Opening things up there, we may discover something that needs to be addressed.
We might, oh, need more.
Even with the asbestos, even with the asbestos abatement that we still don't expect to.
That's their bid. They're going to do one. But they, maybe we can do a little more.
We'll have to pick up asbestos abatement services, or not even air monitoring services, and things like that.
Yeah, oh, yeah. No, it's got to be monitored.
So those expenses.
And we had, you know, we had to get a license from the Labor Department to actually, you know, we had to submit our plan for asbestos abatement. And that comes to Labor Department, they approve it, they send it back, you know. Yeah, we've been through all that.
I think there's some costs there that could be charged to the project.
What's that?
There's some costs.
Yeah.
That could be charged to the project.
Yeah.
And when do they expect to complete the work?
That's a good question.
Especially since they're starting with the basement, rather than starting next year.
We don't want them working on the reading room on the 29th. And we don't want them working in the reading room on August 27th. Which is the gilded, the gilded age schedule, which I just found out today. I'm going to have to work around it, I, you know, I don't know yet. It's supposed to take them a couple of weeks in the kitchen, but I do, I don't think it's going to take that long. It's got the whole floor ripped up right now. All you got to do is pour concrete. Anyway. We're working with all that.
Because I know that the Gilded Age was really anxious.
The what?
That the Gilded Age was really anxious about that work.
We're all anxious. The Gilded Age was here today, and they said they're putting in an air conditioning unit. They want to air conditioning, to air condition that room for filming. So they get this giant unit, and then pipe up the air from wherever they are. They'll probably sit it in the backyard.
Mobile air conditioner.
They did mobile air conditioning for their facilities at the atrium last year.
Yeah. It's amazing what they have to do.
A cool day, no matter what.
Yeah. Cool day. Speaking of that, we have received a grant from the McCarthy Charities this year in the amount of $35,000.
What? What?
$10,000 to go towards the materials budget.
10 for materials?
And $25,000 to go to our portion of the DRI grant.
What happens if we don't get the DRI?
I have no idea. We talked to Bob McCarthy.
Sorry, I need the one last. God bless those people.
You know, let's be, you know, positive here. Will they get the grant? And there's the 25 we need.
Then it's for books and supplies and material.
Yeah. 25. It was basically, I, I had applied. I was going to apply for some specific thing, but then that didn't work out. So, and it's basically operations support. Very nice.
Good ask. combination.
Yeah, yeah.
I recently heard from somebody else that they hadn't gotten any response from McCarthy. So, that makes it even more so.
It was a little unusual this year, because TAP had applied this year for a small grant to do a study of the Lance, access to the Lantingburg branch. What, what can we do to improve access? You know, hand me got access and that sort of thing. But that was not approved. Mark Nelson said, I think that they're going to do something anyway, so. But, yeah, we just, you know, we'd love to be able to use both floors and not spending half a million dollars for an elevator. So, we'll see what we can come up with. On Monday, yesterday, I held a full staff meeting about the budget, the 2023 budget. You know, kind of talking to staff about, you know, how these, how the library is funded, and perhaps what would happen if it doesn't pass. And I think the staff was understood the situation, and I think, you know, supported the decision to go ahead.
So they are very concerned about marketing.
Marketing, yes.
They asked a lot of questions.
I am concerned about marketing.
And how are we going to go about this?
And. And that's what I say, we, we need to put together the message.
Well, now we gave ourselves a little bit extra time to do that.
Yeah. And as I said, the Gilded Age is finally, we're on the schedule for August 27th. And they're going ahead, full blast.
Are they just coming for the one day?
Usually, well, what happens, they have to make all their changes, that's what takes the time. The filming itself on that day, you know, might take a couple hours, and that's it. You know? Usually, the inside filming goes pretty fast. I, I don't know, I haven't talked to them in detail about how much they're going to change and how long that's going to take. Yeah, so, and how disruptive exactly that is.
It is a Saturday, which means we're closed half day anyways. If we're even open, depending on what they need. And if they work, they have all Sunday, which we're closed. They go one on their own schedule. They go one. Oh, yeah, so it just depends on how you do this. Interesting.
I mean, basically, two events to work around. And then we don't want them up there on the 29th either, so.
Jerry has asked a question.
Why, how much are they paying?
We haven't talked about that either.
Good conversation.
Yeah, we haven't made a deal.
How much did they pay last time?
3, 3K. For the exterior shots, and they fixed the door.
Yeah.
Well, that's the thing.
They purified the door.
The doors were worth more than what they paid us. Yeah, 3,000, something.
3K, yeah, it was 3K. Or the few numbers I actually remember.
Yeah, they didn't do much, so they should lack them.
I guess.
They come down.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on what they have to do up there, what kind of disruption, you know.
They, they also did some marble cleaning, too. But, because I was here when they were playing with it.
One thing, the last time they filmed, it wasn't that disruptive, because it was all outside. But this can be a lot more disruptive, which means you need to consider that.
But still, worth, worth the cost. You know, the public cost there. I'm going to use that as part of our marketing, too.
Now, you also had mentioned that you were getting an estimate from Chapman's on the light lights and the.
I mean, shall I ask? He just called me back today.
Good timing.
He's going to be back here on the 18th. What they want, what they have to do, what I guess for is a couple of different approaches to this issue. One of the things that we talked about is, you know, they're 125 years old, it's time we completely, you know, you do a complete makeover of the whole thing.
Now, we're just talking about the light lights, I mean, say the whole thing.
That kind of cost would be enormous. I mean, you know, you could buy a building. Anyways, let me give you figures for that. But there's repair work that they can do, that is, you know, on obvious sections, they need the repair work. And that's what. And that's what, you know, we wanna see as well. You know, as an estimate. So we're gonna look closely at the project on the 18th. They can give us some figures. I'm just, this whole thing has been kind of difficult this year because I'm still waiting for estimates for everything. The only one I actually have is the project at Lanningburg. I don't have the roof estimates yet. They're reluctant to do this and you know, I, I've got questions. We don't know. I mean, you know, is the roof, is there concrete underneath there? Is there wood underneath there? We don't know and we're not gonna find out. So give me a number, you know, that includes everything that's below. But so far I haven't got a number on the roof. Now, I did talk to a roofer that says, and I don't know how true this is, but it's actually a better idea if you're gonna put compressor on the roof to do the roof after.
We'll do some things. That, that is, in fact, we had intended, when we wrote that grant, to include roofing in that area for that very reason.
So anyway, but it would be, you know, if, if, if it's, you know, we can get a reasonable estimate out of it, would be probably an idea to do the roof. I mean, you know, it is twenty years old.
The, I'm sorry, you mentioned the light lights are getting, who is offering a quote on the light lights?
What's that?
Said you're having some conversations.
Yeah.
The light lights.
Yeah.
With whom are you speaking?
Chapman.
Chapman? Is that a, please, I'm not.
That's, um, yeah, that's actually an Albany company, but they do, that's their, that's what they do.
Chapman Glass?
Yeah, it's, um.
Thank you.
Will they be just Chapman Glass or Chapman Stained Glass?
They do stained glass, basically.
It's not a regular glass company.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, it's not like, what's the guy up here? No, they're stained glass. Yeah.
I found their website. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, they have fifty years of experience. That's my report.
So this is for the construction grant? You're thinking about this?
If I can get an estimate in time, I've got deadlines coming up.
I was just thinking.
I have not submitted anything to SHPO. I have not submitted anything yet.
Yeah, I was thinking about.
I don't know what's gonna happen. The only thing I've got is a number for the Lanningburg project and that's all I got.
So which roofers have you reached out to?
What's that?
Which roofing companies have you reached out to?
Ultimate, Titan. I don't know, I have a list.
If you wanna share me the list with me, I'm happy to make some calls if that's helpful.
Pinnacle is probably my best possible way at this point. Ultimate Roofing, Tecta, Americal Water, Weather Guard, Canopy Roofing and Sheet Metal and Titan. So far. What's that? They turned me down. They don't, they won't do it. Don't, don't ask me why.
That was the first. They were the first ones. They're, they're, they're our roofer.
Yeah, they turned me down.
No, they, I think they said no before they saw the drain. They didn't want to deal with the normative project. They did materials issues and I think they didn't want to really deal with the governmental agency. I'll put it that, you know, there was too much.
The talk, the talk too is in terms of materials. You're like a year out. You know, if you order now.
It is very incredible.
So, yeah. But that's okay. I mean, you always have three years to do these projects, right? So that's not a problem.
I asked, I'm sorry, but so we have in a sense two choices depending on what estimates you get, you'll submit the one you, well, do we have to approve this before you actually submit? That's what I'm wondering and how we're gonna do that if it needs to be in.
You guys have submitted grants in the last thirty years.
And no approval. Okay, I'm fine with not. I'm fine with saying we know the two projects.
It's a bunch of money available, you know, you grab it when you get.
Everyone doesn't have to be submitted.
Well, let's see, I gotta submit this, August.
I just didn't know the exact date.
Deadline somewhere. But it's, it doesn't have to be complete then, but I gotta know exactly what we're gonna do and how much it's gonna cost. Actually, the final is due August 31st.
But you need to have it in early or so that you don't.
August 3rd, I have to submit my bare bones and I have to tell them what we're gonna do and how much it's gonna cost.
Right.
August 3rd. I don't have to submit the actual grant application, but I do have to submit that on the 31st. But in the meantime, you know, you've got this whole thing with SHPO, which takes a month.
If we don't know what the roof deck is, that means we don't know what the roof assembly is either. And it may be worthwhile, even if we don't do it as part of this grant right now, to have some cores taken through the roof by someone who can look at it, identify, let us know if there's asbestos in there and tell us what the roof deck is, so that when we do a project in the future, we would know.
Yeah.
I could connect with some people who would be qualified to make those kinds of cores and then also patch those cores so they would remain watertight.
Well, I was looking to through the files for the work that we did in twenty years ago, looking for if there was anything at that point in terms of an explanation of, it was a built up roof that was there. And a lot of that had to be removed and then they, they put down, I forgot how many inches of insulation, but it was actually, I was told, whatever was put down there is no longer cold. You have to put, you know, more insulation. But anyway, I can't find any asbestos issues related to what was up there. And then what they laid on, of course, is EPDM, you know, over after it was prepared. So, but the big question that Ultimate had was, you know, is it a wood base underneath or is it concrete? So that's gonna make a difference in the pricing. I said, well, pick the one that's more expensive. Yeah.
Never got, or were, they were not retained, the asbestos for this building. They just don't exist. I think it sounds like well, has some documentation, but we never know if that's clean or accurate.
Yeah, I don't know. I might not, but I won't be able to read them.
And have you spoken all with folks at East Coast Wilson Baker?
About?
About the roof deck?
No.
It might be, it might be a short conversation and they will advise you, since they were looking at the corners, they may have looked further back and have an understanding what their roof deck assembly is made of.
Yeah, I don't know. Titan actually did those repairs up there. I don't know if they know anything.
I'll put upon Larry Boston's, if he knows it.
I'll put upon Larry Boston. Yeah, yeah. But I don't know, I guess that's the big question, whether it's wood or concrete. There's some, there is an asbestos issue though with some of the sealer, I think. But I think it's minor. I don't think it's a major issue. Be that as it may, I just need a number from these people. Like Paul and Keith.
You say Ultimate was the one who's giving the most hope for optimism?
Yeah, I just talked to them again. They said they were working on it, I think, yeah, and. And, hey, that's it?
That's it? Making sure. All business, new business?
Several items.
Well. Yes. So, should I? Did you have any, just please, you raised your hand too.
So, shall I start with the evaluation tool? So the administration committee did work on the evaluation tool that had been used last time for the director of the library and has produced a tool. We thought we would have it earlier for you to review, but you've probably not even seen it yet because it just got in the Dropbox today. Originally, we're going to try to have you approve it for use by the board in evaluating the director. Paul's familiar with this. He has an interest in seeing it prepared. But I was thinking, since people really haven't had a chance to review it, administration committee, that maybe we should give them a couple of days to, to comment. What do you think?
The officials have opted to review.
So, to try and make it flow faster, can I suggest that people send in their comments in response to any certain period of time and what we consider reasonable? And we're talking primarily about Kristen, Carolyn and Brianna because the rest of us are on. So can you speak with Brianna as well as yourself? What, what would the two of you suggest?
I'm working with me.
So, you two, how, how much time do you feel you need to review this?
Right now in my hand, I would have to get it back tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, so if it's in the Dropbox, I could.
It is, and I think it actually is here to. It's, I think it was separate, so it might be in.
Yes, it's, yeah.
You're missing part of it. Thank you.
So you really just move the two.
Oh, it's already stapled.
One of the things that we discussed, he, we could have to remind, because you know, I always that we would like to see succession planning and continuity of.
From next year.
But what is this, what is the term?
From next year, we would like to add this category continuity of operations planning and succession plan for all senior staffs.
And so, because it's not something that's been discussed before, there was the feeling that it would be not fair to evaluate.
And part of the reason this has come up is we have seen turnover. We expect to see more. The other thing, right now, the library director, senior staff, line staff and previous boards have done an outstanding job of getting through a once in a century event in the last couple of years. It's time to look at, capture what went right and figure out what we can do that we could do better the next time and document that and plan for. And that will help us in a number of ways being ready going forward in the future. You know, even, even if the very godmother shows up with her suitcase full of money and we gotta move out of this place for a period of time while L's knowns rebuild it. That's gonna get some of that information for you. It's used for a multitude of things, not just for the next once in a century, once in fifty year event. But right now, we've had that success. Let's capture what everybody learned good or how to do it better next time and capture and document it.
Okay, so Brianna isn't here, so I'm not sure that it's really fair to say, well, we expect this tomorrow. All week or, I mean, because you two are finding a shorter period of time. The end of the week or by next Monday or I would prefer shorter than a week.
If they might, please spit it out.
I didn't have a date tonight. I could answer tomorrow, but Brianna's not here. Her schedule is quite demanding, I think. Okay, maybe I can email her and ask her. Anybody?
Also, it'd be good to have, if you guys can do it quickly, it'd be good to have you do it quickly and then we just. Well, I think we might include her thoughts, but I think, you know, if we explain that, it doesn't matter.
I'm not sure if it's that much of an advantage to have, having Kristen's and Carolyn's and no Brianna. Okay, so yes, people may get there soon, sooner, as Jerry suggested, but I will get back to you by, and let you know as far as what I've heard from Brianna. And then we had a scheduled rocket science. And something you may want to put some thought into too, you know. I would think. Sometimes I, I think of more things when I let them sit for a little bit.
Yeah, so, so people may need to read this and go for a jog.
Right, because that's something up into your head, take a shower, you know. Okay, so we have a plan for that. We'll have to redo our schedule for the administration committee that we had outlined. Because once we get the input, we also want to send it out again and have you actually complete the tool. We expect to do that in a way that would allow anonymous submissions of your tools. Any questions or comments at this point?
We thought something other than a tool.
We thought something other than a tool.
The instrument.
It just strikes me, and I feel like instrument better.
I, yeah, I don't know. It's just tool is loaded.
Evaluation. Yeah, just quote what it is.
Evaluation.
Yeah, it's called.
An evaluation? Okay. The other item that we discussed was the director's raise. Paul has requested.
We can do that in each executive session, remember?
Right, I know, but, but the discussion we goes into executive session, but... So, do we want to do that now, then, or?
Well, considering that we have to get it in out of this, and get out of here.
That's okay, I've already talked to Brianna about this.
I would suggest, if we're gonna do this, community feedback, all the new business community feedback, another public comment with center dates, and then go into executive session. And that way, if we have any problems getting back to a recording, it won't be a difficulty.
Okay, so those were two items from the administration committee. The other item I have are grants. So, as you know, I mentioned that we were invited to submit another grant for the application for 20,000 because we got the, the previous one from the preservation league. But that has to be in by the 22nd of July, at least a point. Not, it's sort of like Paul described, as far as the construction grant goes, we have to tell them what we want to apply for, and then they decide whether we can fill out the whole application. 22nd. And you have the parameters? They... They... It's through a private foundation that's managed by Wells Fargo, and it says the grant will support capital projects such as window repair, exterior restoration, accessibility improvements, HVAC systems, or other physical building preservation projects that meet the secretary's standards. Priority will be given to projects leading to greater public access to the arts, especially in traditionally underserved communities. So, we can...
They don't require a written estimate, you know, what about the light lights?
Um, well, you might have something by the 18th.
Hopefully, well, I can, you know, I'm supposed to talk to them on the 18th.
Right.
Maybe I can get a verbal, you know, idea.
I can go back and look on the whatever brief thing that you're supposed to fill out. The actual application, the full application's due August 5th. So, there isn't too, you know, too much time in between. Is that something, which is one of the reasons where you have to discuss it tonight rather than at the building committee?
Let me, you know, if I can get, you know, a global...
It's only 20,000.
Only 20,000.
There's definitely some repair that needs to be done on some of those.
On the door, I know, the door, too, is... Right, the one into the courtyard?
Which one?
The one into the courtyard, is miss, isn't that missing a panel? Or... No?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
So, that could be fixed, too. If it's...
Well, I think, I think...
While they were fixing.
Yeah.
But we do, we have no idea how much that is. Right, I mean, you know, we don't know whether it's smaller than a breadbox or bigger than a building. So, we have no idea what the cost is.
Well, as I say, I think it's more critical in terms of, there's a couple of cracked pieces on the light lights, but those, those areas being repaired, and I think, I, you know, the door is just a matter of, you know...
But it may not be much to, to add on to do at the same time that they're, you know, already doing the other work.
Well, I could talk to them and see what they think in terms of, uh, cost.
See what they're writing. I heard that by the 22nd, we don't need cost, we just need...
I would have to check, but I think we do need to identify what we're going to use on. By, by that, so I don't know that we need the actual cost.
I think we could say, light lights, we can do some portion of the light lights for $20,000.
Yeah.
You know, we could, if all the light lights, I can order 20,000, but maybe we'll do one portion of it.
Right, and we actually, we have another 10,000 that's donated there as well. So, that'd give us 30,000. And I, and I think it's good to do something that we know that we can do versus, you know, for instance, something that we don't know. Like, people asked about the DRI and, you know, what happens if we don't get the DRI, what happens to McCarthy? You don't want...
Thing is, if you had somebody who had a good camera, you can show exactly what we wanted to. When you look up, it's very visible.
You don't have a drone? No?
I'm sure that we'd be happy to throw a drone.
Yeah. Um, so, and also, we don't, you know, and also, these grants tend to need completion sooner than three years. The preservation league grant we got was for a year, but they, you know, if we kept in touch with them, it was fine to go over there.
I'm just confused. Oh, at one point, I think, wasn't this the grant you said that, it said, "Don't call us"?
No, they said, "Don't ask questions." Right, the preservation leagues had said, "Don't," I mean, it's essentially not theirs.
Okay.
But this is the information that we have.
All right, because I know there's some questions that you said you would check on, but you know, have you identified someone who could answer them, then?
Well, I, no, I looked at the material they have sent us. The foundation itself is at Wells Fargo, I don't think there's going to be much success. What, what questions do you have that are unanswered?
Well, you were just talking about some of the questions that came up through this. And I'm trying to think of what some of them were now. Justin, well, that one was whether we need the bid now.
I don't, right, I would not call them to ask that. I would look to see what the initial application is, but I don't know that stuff over my, off the top of my head. I looked at it previously, but I don't know.
Perhaps for $20,000, it's the cost of $20,000 to, there's some portion of the light lights.
So, go for it.
Yeah, I think you're, I mean, that's a project of repair that, you know, we need to do. It's not a project of, you know, renovating the whole light system there.
And it has some art component to it?
Yeah.
Yes, there was huge, too, but appropriate, so that's...
Was it on top of the art?
Yes.
Now, do you really?
We'll see them soon. They'll be at the event. I think you're scheduled for the event. I think you have a scheduled appointment.
So, so we're good to go ahead with that? Do we need a vote? Or because of what Paul said earlier, we don't need a vote on that?
Yeah, I think, I think everybody's pretty happy we're going in that direction.
Okay, now, the consolidated funding applications are due July 29th. Obviously, at this point, we're not going to apply for that. Correct?
Yeah, I don't think we, no, I don't see that this year.
You know, I mean, it's very, there wouldn't even be time to get letters of support, you know? At this point, so, and we do seem to have a large scope of what we're already in, like, at this time, too.
We gotta peace ourselves.
DRI, they asked for a profile to go to the state even before the final vote, so...
Do you think that's a clue?
It's kind of a summary of the project. And so, we're, well, yes, we're assuming that, that it's a good sign on that art book. Hearing nothing. I did hear, did hear that they feel they got about 100 applications. The only last thing, I don't, did people get what I sent out on the the video of the July 9th meeting? In case you want to look, I started to look at it. I was surprised that in the top count of those projects that for the public, you know, open house that they had, not this last one, but the prior one, where the library was, was on, was not on that list. And they had, they had a list, so, for instance, the atrium was 23 votes, 23 high priority votes. What else? There, there was a number of them. And I wondered why the library was not there, because...
It's tied for first.
Right, and then there were some votes also that would have come online that we might not have known about, but, yeah, I'm not...
Yeah, I saw some, you know, 60% of people who filled out that survey.
That was a survey, but there was a meeting, a public meeting, that was held. And I thought, perhaps he might have heard something about that.
They had, right, well, they had some technical difficulties with managing their process and capturing moving between formats.
But still not being that, you know, one of your top vote getters in the list is sort of beyond a technical issue.
Maybe see some criticism or presence at that meeting?
No.
Please, I would love to hear what your reaction is to that video.
We weren't the only one. Applicants were there.
And there were other projects I was associated with, and, you know, I'm on the bid board, there was a bid project there, nobody was criticizing.
And there were people who...
A good presence there.
There were people who wanted us to speak and asked us to speak on it. Um, and there were people who were telling us to ask for more money.
I don't know, please see what you... I've got specs. It's in the video where there's, you know, the criticism of, you know...
I don't remember, I'll go look. You know there was politics. I think Keith made that clear. Was it from a particular person or persons that said this, or did they refer that they had heard that there was criticism?
There was a reference about being the majority.
There were three of us.
Well, I don't know whether they meant the majority of the public that was there, I mean, to me.
There are three out of a whole bunch of people.
That, you know, that we care about things, you know, it's a good thing.
I'm sorry, I'm still voter.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so, I mean, that was... It was an open meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I, I don't know, that's why I was confused. Okay, that's, I could, can I get it? Do you want to have anything else? I don't think so.
I don't know. Here's the one that we know if you do or not.
Thank you for the resolution on Brianna, I appreciate that. For the light lights, the 20,000.
Oh, when you say resolution, I think we just said...
A decision, yes.
You got granted.
Go ahead, I can do something.
Yeah, go ahead. Please keep us informed about the numbers, et cetera, you know, when you hear some, when, after you reread your materials, if you wouldn't let, please, you know, update us on knowing whether you need the estimate. You know, all those little details, and then Paul will update us on what happens with Chapman and his numbers.
Yeah.
As soon as you hear it, that would be good, and then we could put everything together and just know where things stand. Especially since we haven't done this show as even more officially, which is fine with me, but it always makes you know what's going on. All right. And let's see, go back to new business. I have a list. I'm trying to see, are there members of the Friends here? Well, I'll just, what, you don't see anybody? I'll just do a couple, couple update, other new businesses and updates. Lori Dyer, the new manager over at Lansingburg, has come up with an incredibly comprehensive and far-reaching outreach plan, outreach days, definitely added, just want to take lots of notes. But, um, I think we're well on our way, we'll be at River Fest this Sunday. From 11 to 5, what?
Do you want?
Oh, outreach for the library. We've got the, all the materials already for programs, we're gonna do, sign up for library cards, and we'll get to talk to people who'll start to talk to us about water.
No, we don't use the harvest market table anymore.
There was a little hiatus in time, but it would be good to go back and bring that in, too, but they have never said no.
No, no, we used to do it like, once a month, or once a week.
Oh, I know. I was there. But, yeah, took a little hiatus for a little bit.
Well, I understand, yeah. With everything, but it's, since there's community tables back, right?
Oh, yes, oh, in fact, they've been back for a while, I was still doing it up till late fall, and then took a couple of months away, and then we'll get back to this, it's just like the Saturdays that have blown out of...
But it shouldn't be just you, it should be every, well, it's...
Hopefully, and then, you know, there's some talk about that, but it's always hard to get someone to come and volunteer the table, so, we can talk. If, if you don't mind, we can talk about the dates, now go over it. Yeah, I know you did, too. Now, anyway, um, the Friends, by the way, the bookseller is open now on Wednesdays from 2 to 5, and then the 10 to 1 on Saturdays, and I hear they're very, commented that they're very busy on those days, this is wonderful. They're also talking, they've been talking to the library about funding some more projects. So, that's a discussion in play, because they want to be here for the library and support not just smaller projects, but major projects, still. And in fact, asked if, if they had, if they could offer some funding for, like, our DRI, if that would have helped us, too. So, thank you to the Friends. This is Curiosity, so we have our election coming up in September. The two seats that are up now are yours and yours. Are you intending on running again?
I don't know yet.
You don't know yet? And you?
Considering, yes.
Considering?
I, I'm interested in running.
Okay. Again, this is not an obligation, it's just a, okay. Thanks. Good for me. Any other older new business? Maybe I've forgotten something, and so I'm really sorry. All right, community feedback? Well, I do have some. It's about the art gallery. So, a patron complained about the sound quality during a musical program. And it's true, it was a little bit, shall we say, muddy, and it just wasn't a very, you know, clear. So, few people, but mostly one was very vocal about not liking it, and I will say that the musicians, while not criticizing the room, admitted that it was a challenge when they had multiple instruments to try to bring out the clearest sound if they could. And they said it was a, or the difficult room, if not, yeah, so...
What kind of music were they playing?
Um, it, what is the name of them?
It's metal?
Instruments, yes.
And was it acoustic or was it amplifier?
I would say it was acoustic, I don't think they had amplifiers. They did, I did not see it. I'm blanking out on the group. They had clarinets, mostly wind, brass wind, some really fascinating pieces of instrument. some really fascinating pieces of instrument. I never knew there were so many clarinets. I know there are a couple, but.
Were they demonstrating, demonstrating old instruments, or what was the purpose of it?
Oh, the purpose was, it was part of Juntes.
Okay.
So they were focusing on certain black composers. And they even bookmarked their proof note, and it's just like going right out of my head, but yeah. But they were absolutely wonderful. They were very amusing too, but the sound was.
Try to stay on topic. My blood sugar is dropping, I need to leave soon. A few minutes ago.
So, that's okay. So that was, I think that's it for community feedback. Anybody else? Okay, public comments? Do we have any public comment at this point? I can't see. I see. Stephanie, hello? Okay, so, here we go, public comment. Date and time and next meeting, August ninth, twenty twenty-two, most likely going to be in Lansingberg. I will confirm that before the meeting. We are hardwired and can go anywhere. And now, if we all agree, if we'd like to go into executive session, please, which means, kind sir, you would like to depart.
I will depart.
Excuse me, I have to go.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please, if you don't mind. I would appreciate it. Mute, then pause the recording. Hi, Stephanie.
And then, you want to, everybody has to leave too?
Well, all we're gonna do when we come back is adjourn, so.